Call this meeting order. Shall I stand for the pledge allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, consent agenda. Can we make a motion for the approved consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, North Metro Harness Initiative liquor license, I guess that's first up. And Jessica, you'd read the message?
City of Columbus public hearing notice liquor license. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held by the Columbus City Council on Wednesday, March 14th, 2018 at 7:00 PM or to soon thereafter as parties may be heard as required by city code in the city home located at 16319 over Bullard, Columbus, Minnesota, to review a request by the licensed applicant for on sale in contemplating Sunday at 2:00 AM liquor licenses. The hearing shall continue until all evidence and testimony has been received. Licensed applicant, North Metro Harness Initiative LLC, doing business as Running Aces Casino and Race Track, identified premises at 15201 Zurich Street Northeast, Columbus, Minnesota, AKA Running Aces Bullard, signed by Lori Lumio, Deputy Clerk, published in the Forest Lake Times on March 1st, 2018.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Deputy Mayor and council members, you have a memo from our office. We reviewed the license. Everything's in order. There have been no violations. And the only thing we noted, since there's likely a hotel project coming, that when that hotel project comes along, it will have a separate liquor license and will, at that time, need to modify the licensed premises. This is an area, the licensed premises in this case includes both interior areas and areas immediately adjacent to the interior, since the hotel will potentially encroach on some of those licensed premises. Not only would a new license issued for the hotel, but we would probably amend the licensed premises for the existing license. So that's noted on the first page of the memo, and that will be coming hopefully shortly. So with that, the staff is recommending approval of the renewal of the license.
Okay. Anything you guys would like to add?
No, I think Bill handled it.
Bill handled it quite well?
Yeah, we are hoping, you know, with the hotel and that project, that we will accept the license.
Okay.
So.
And have two liquor licenses.
Right.
Perfect. So, a while back, you guys had an infraction down there, an underage drinking infraction. Are you guys, you did?
Yeah, we did.
Yep.
It was two years ago.
Yep.
Are you continuing to do training with everybody?
Yep, we have continued tips training every quarter, so three times a year, and then the rollover kind of takes on that fourth quarter.
Okay.
And that's in the liquor license that we follow, and then we also do continued training throughout the year with new hires and stuff like that and current staff to remind them to make sure that they're guarding people and following procedures.
Okay. So are you the newer gal?
Yeah.
You've been?
Well, kinda.
Kinda? Okay. I don't have anything else, I guess.
I really don't either. I'm just kind of curious, since we increased it from 1:00 AM to 2:00 AM, I was wondering if there's an increase in any of the police calls down there from that. We probably don't have that information, but I just thought about it a while back when I was reading through the pamphlets.
We didn't look into how many calls were to Running Aces, because that could be a variety of different reasons why they would get calls. We were asked about the DWIs and whether there was any increase in DWIs over the years, and when I called Joe Murphy, who's our criminal processing acuing attorney, he said there really has not been a change, that it seems like it's pretty steady across the board at the number of DWIs, which is between eight and 12 each year. So they really, he didn't attribute it to Running Aces liquor license.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, can we make a motion?
They can make a motion to approve the adoption of the new, renewal of the liquor license.
Second.
And that would be subject to the conditions contained in the report and attached to the license?
Correct.
Yes, sir.
Any discussion? Call for a vote.
Aye.
All figure aye. Opposed? Passes? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda, planning commission report.
Mr. Deputy Mayor?
It's me.
That sounds really good. Council, last Wednesday, planning commission met, and we took on a preliminary plat application from the Lackner Woodland Ponds. It's actually located at 15554 Zodiac. Basically, this plat will take a almost 20 acre piece of property, split it into two, one that's going to be almost 13 acres, the other one's going to be almost six and a half. At the public hearing, two folks testified at that. Mrs. Langren, she owns the property directly to the south of the proposed change. Her issue was positioning of her house versus proposed building site, and of course, we know that that's not reason for denial on the plat. But one other issue that she did bring up was the water at the end of the driveway. Here being concerned about the fact that her driveway may end up being flooded.
Because of the driveway they're putting in for the new house?
Correct. That should, I'm sorry, sorry.
That's okay.
That should end up being handled in the design and construction of the driveway.
Should be. You wouldn't think that would be a problem?
So she accessed her driveway. Can we have blown a picture of this Elizabeth on the screen, please?
Do you want the floodplain map or the regular map?
Site location map.
The blue is the floodplain, so it shows you where the water is.
So is this the person to the south that's concerned about future flooding on their driveway?
Correct.
Does their driveway come all the way down here and then out on that street there, correct?
That is correct, sir.
So the two buildable lots are going to be here, or splitting it up and then here? Is that what we're talking about, putting the?
Correct, that is being the buildable area for the property, just to the east of that wetland area?
Okay. And how are they going to work that with the driveway? Are they going to come across the wetland, or are they going to come somehow?
Yes, sir. They've secured an okay.
Oh, they did, okay.
Come across the wetland.
I think what their problem is, they see how the floodplain goes out, well, this is the wetland line?
Yep.
And I think the driveway, as you can see, comes through here. She's afraid that if there's another driveway here, if they raise the elevation of the driveway, it pushes the water, it pushes the water back. I mean, I think the water naturally flows back into the wetland, and without a culvert in there, I don't know how much water we'd get back there.
Well, they'll have to put a culvert. Every driveway has a culvert.
The culvert is at the driveway, and it's, you know, I mean, it's for the road ditch. It's not for, you know, I mean, it's not for the driveway.
But then the conditions where they install one further back to prevent that from happening?
I think you would add a condition that, and have the engineer review elevations to make sure the water flows in, and a culvert, if a culvert is needed, then you would recommend that size of a culvert.
Well, either way, in a case where there's a lot of rain, or it snows and melts, there should be a culvert there to relieve it anyways, regardless. Don't you think?
I agree. I would like to see that in the conditions, that they have an additional culvert in that wetter area back away from the road.
I have that same scenario at my house, where a neighbor put a road in, it didn't culvert, and it backs up onto my property all the time, in the spring especially. So putting a culvert in there, that's nothing.
Nothing, no.
And if that makes her whatever.
So there'll be two culverts?
There's one existing right now further up on the road, she said.
Okay. No, there'll be one punched in there when they put the road in, in the ditch.
Oh, in a ditch, yeah.
In the ditch.
We want our, the additional one further back into the property, off the ditch line.
I don't think that's an excessive request.
No.
So you're recommending that as a condition of approval?
Yep. And what do you think?
With additional culvert.
You know it's going to hold water.
And if the one backs up, they still have the other one, then the driveway's not an issue. I understand what the other person's saying, so I think this would eliminate that problem.
And it's all flowing north, we figure.
Looking at the elevations. We asked the engineer to review the elevations, but I do believe the elevations show that the water would flow towards the wetland, because it's a lower elevation.
Think so. All right, anything else?
There was one other testimony received, that was a complaint or a concern that adding another property would increase the water pressure or water issue on the phone system in the area. Elizabeth handled that situation. She contacted phone company and told them about that, right? You were going to?
I'm going to contact the phone company. We, all over Columbus, we have this issue, because we have high water table, and the old copper lines are not faring well in the water, and what's happening is, is when it rains too much and they get submerged in water, they no longer work. And so, I've had several people call me and tell me every time it rains, they have no phone. So I simply call people at CenturyLink and put in a work order and tell them to follow up with the people, and they've, so far, they've fixed it. Now, this gentleman said he's called repeatedly and has not had any success, so we'll certainly follow up.
Yeah.
Of course, this will be an issue that's ongoing, since they shut the compressors off back in the early 80s.
I have that with my house once in a while, heavy rains or thawing, and I'll lose my internet. I come out and do some switching around, then I get it back next day, but you're right, it's an ongoing problem in the city.
I'm sorry, like I said, that preliminary plat application comes with the recommendation for approval from the planning commission.
Okay. Like to act on that now? Anybody want to make a motion with the new condition we put in there?
So moved.
I'll second that, but you want to add the culvert.
Yes, new condition?
Yep.
All right, discussion? Call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes?
We also received a comp plan update from our planner, Mr. Johnson. The, currently, he has a pretty good rough draft ready. Some issues that he did bring up, there is no desire either from the council or from the residents to lower the density from five to two and a half acres, so that'll be off the table. Also, if the Met Council states that are to be acceptable, leaving the overlay in the southeast quadrant at the freeway district, and allow that to remain as it is in the last plan. With that, it'll still, it should, it will still include light industrial as well as the commercial zoning. Moving closer to the interchange with that, the plan will add high-density entertainment and retail office-oriented businesses in that area. Moving away from the interchange here, going to the west, that is going to look like, that's going to end up being a new service, or I beg your pardon, it will show a new service commercial opportunity district. I beg your pardon, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I skipped one here. The new interchange plan, or addition to the plan, will be a high-density entertainment and retail and office-oriented business. Then moving farther west, will be the service commercial opportunity district. In the northwest quadrant, the residents preferred to see residential and commercial remain in that area. It's Mr. Johnson's opinion that residential be limited, or be totally, I'm sorry, let's try it one more time, the area west of Zurich, everything west of Zurich be strictly residential. The big change will come in how the residential is defined, the overlays in the commercial area that can actually help support housing. Here, what we're looking at is retail underneath and housing above it, or in some cases, side by side. Moving forward, the plan has to be submitted by the end of May. Two methods to go there. One is prepare the plan, have an open house, invite the public back in, similar to the previous two, or take a public hearing and approve it. The planning commission would move a plan forward to the city council in April, and then have a public hearing, and any changes after that, it would then be ready to go by the end of May, making the first of June deadline, so that it can get out to the other areas that it needs to go to, as well as the Met Council.
What is the final plan? What does that do? This is preliminary?
So the draft plan, the draft plan would come to the planning commission April 18th. They would review the plan, you'd review the plan one more time, you would have a public hearing in May. After that public hearing, you would put any comments, last comments you have in, and then that would be the version that we would submit, both the Met Council and the surrounding cities. When it came back, then you would adopt a final version of the comp plan.
Elizabeth, do we know how far the light, or light industrial comes up towards Gander Mountain?
So right now, if you, this is 147th, Gander Mountain is right here, which is commercial showroom, we have retail, and then Harvest Racing, this is where Running Aces is, and then the industrial is pretty far south, and then you have commercial showroom along the entire freeway.
Because a while back, when my thought was that they canceled properties, and we have outdoor storage and stuff anyway, but I was thinking, maybe, we kind of concentrated on the residential five acres last time, we never went any further than that, about extending that light industrial maybe down to the Gander Mountain site? Just a thought. I mean, I've been talking about that for quite a while, but.
Well, between the.
Well, Gander Mountain is right here, right?
Mm-hmm.
So if that, from there on toward the freeway heading south, make that light industrial? I mean, what do we have in there right now? I mean, there's a, you have the mini storage in there, and they're expanding, and that's outdoor stuff. Because some of the people haven't heard of trying selling their properties.
Yep, Coats and Wesmore, and all, yep, and all those guys are outdoor storage, I mean.
It's there.
You could, you could probably make an argument that Caterpillar is light industrial with the kind of equipment that goes in and out of there. Same way with Wesmore, you know, and these people are calling, they're, you know, we've had several requests through all this stuff to turn their property into light industrial. Same way with on the other side, along Hornsby. So there's, I mean, I don't, I don't think, I don't know what the rest, what the other, but I don't think Dean should just go in and just leave this the way it was, because the feedback was to turn this into light industrial here, up to Gander Mountain, and then on the other side of, you know, both sides, there's this whole thing, because you could get a, you could get an international harvester dealer, you could get a Peterbilt dealer, any of that stuff is going to be just like Caterpillar, or just like Wesmore, and it, you know, it kind of all fits. I mean, the mini storage has got outdoor storage, and so does Coats. It all fits together, kind of. I just think it'd be easier to sell the stuff.
The original plan that we did 10 years ago, or actually 20 years ago, when we started, because at one time, this was freeway A, freeway B, and then we further defined districts. The difference between the commercial industrial and the freeway district light industrial is all the outdoor storage in the freeway district was supposed to be finished product and display.
Right.
And that sort of thing. And that's how you got the Ziegler with their big equipment, and Coach trailer and the commercial showroom with theirs, and that was the trend in this district. And then the commercial industrial district had the contractor shops, so the districts didn't compete against each other, so you had different uses in the commercial industrial district versus the light industrial district. But in the comp plan, you're just going to determine commercial and industrial, you're either going to put it red or purple. There's only two designations in the comp plan. So if you want to move the line to the red to the purple, I mean, the planning commission or the council could make a suggestion for where the line is.
Can they do an overlay, or it's got to be one or the other?
That's the, yeah, those are the designations, that it's kind of like overall areas of what type of uses they're going to be, and then you could further define them by zoning districts.
And then the same way on the other side of Hornsby here, we got some pieces that probably should be adjusted. I mean, I mean, we got industrial right here, right? This is industrial?
Yep, that's light industrial.
So we got, I mean.
So in terms of, in terms of process, I think if that's the direction you want investigated, the planning commission is first charged, as you know, with the comp plan recommendation that it comes to the full council, so I think it's something that the planning commission would discuss with that input.
Well, some of the, some of these owners are asking for it. I got a phone call today from an owner that's right in here that wants it changed, because they're having a hard time selling their property under the, what it is now.
And we did, the area that's red in the comp plan, after we adopted the comp plan 20 years ago, that's when we did the Harvest Racing, the commercial retail, and the commercial showroom. You could do the same thing with the light industrial, you could have two or three sub-districts in there, depending on what uses you want in there. The same with the commercial, because I know they talked, we talked about mixed use and, you know, need where you could have business and campus and all those other types of uses, so you're going to further define each of the districts, and you'll have sub-districts. Like Harvest Racing is not going to be in the comp plan, it's just going to stay commercial.
Right, but, and I agree with this, in and around, the Harvest Track should stay the way it is, so that it all kind of coincides together, but if you get away from the intersection, it's, these people are, they're having issues selling, so.
Mr. Deputy Mayor, how much of that would end up being handled through zoning ordinances? And what is it that we could qualify it as to get that ability to change it, however you might want it?
Well, like Dean said at last meeting, it's not much to get an amendment done. They do it all the time, so.
But they're in the middle of the comp plan now, we can just label it as that, couldn't we?
Yeah, I think the, the reason I brought up process is the, what should occur is all of the recommendations, your comments, other comments, the comments of the public, the comments of owners, should go into consideration of the document, and then you have a public hearing, and then it comes to the council for kind of final tweaking. So I think, you know, one owner may want industrial, another owner may want commercial showroom. I think that's where the, you know, the planning commission, in taking all that testimony and has to make the recommendation to you as council members, and then go from there.
I think most of the owners down there have given up on the commercial showroom. I think they just have.
Right.
And, and the columns told us we needed to change some of that, too. So.
And if you hear from them, it'd be best if they would put those comments in writing, so we have a record of who's looking for what changes, and that way, it isn't just, you know, kind of.
Right.
Buy the buy.
Okay, I'll, I'll tell them, to put it in writing and send it in. Because what's happening down there is that this one particular couple who has property down there is, they're trying to rent out their buildings, which probably should be taken down, and they're having a hard time selling it because of what it's classified at, and I think they would have an easier time selling it, and it might be easier for Elizabeth, instead of having to say no to everything, to get it changed and get it sold, you know? And I, some of those uses, like I, like I named, some of those dealership types of things, they're, they used to keep nice places, they just got finished equipment, you know? I mean, Caterpillar is a really nice place. Wesmore, they keep their place really nice, so I don't see a problem with those kind of businesses.
No, there isn't. Jim, anything else?
That's it, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr.
Let's carry that discussion later. Here we're going to do. All right, next, open, public open forum. Anybody here for a public open forum? Mr. Mike?
Yeah, Mike, 15123 Hornsby. I just have a follow-up, following Jim there, on the zoning that we're talking about, and I know there's some more steps we have to go through, but if you look on the east side of Hornsby over there, kind of where the little squares are right there, that's a little industrial park.
There's one, he's, he got one there. It's a test, you don't take it. Oh, nope, farther up. It's right here, it's up here.
And that license to run these things.
Red thing.
The orange stuff.
There you go.
There we go, okay. Perfect. So right here, this is all the industrial park right now, Brinkman's trailer, it's not Brinkman's no more, it's USA trailer or something. We got the boat place here. I mean, all these people, their zoning, they're really not, they're not zoned to be there right now. I don't know the right term to use, but let's just say Brinkman's, and I know it's not Brinkman's, USA trailer, let's just say that they go out of business and a car lot comes in there, they can't do it. But if that zoning was changed to light industrial, I believe that car lot could come in there. So with that being said, I just believe that if all this, if you just take all this purple and move it all the way over to here, it'll make sense, because all these people do storage, outside storage, I mean, they got a ton of boat storage going on here, outside storage, they got storage going on here where the other trailer place is, it all would just fit right in there. This property is split in half, this is all in one parcel here, the back is light industrial and the front is commercial showroom. So I believe that this property line, this purple, needs to get all the way up to here and over. here and over all this. You'll get some tax, you, you, like Mr. Kreb said earlier, you'll have more of an audience, a potential audience to buy this property, cause there's a lot of property for sale right in this area. You'll get some tax base rolling. Right now, there is nothing, there's nothing going on over there.
What about the, what about the, uh, the yellow is commercial showroom again, right?
Yes.
So, I know there's some stuff going on right in there, how is that, I mean?
That's got the most freeway visibility for the freeway.
I know it does, but the stuff that there, that there's scuttlebutt about going on doesn't necessarily fit commercial showroom, I don't think. Does, will, does a warehouse go in there, like the one down in Lionel, would that go in there? That big warehouse is down past Centerville down, it's in Lionel Lakes, would that fit in there?
I think if, uh, I'm trying to think if it was manufacturer where, I'd have to look at that list. I don't remember, commercial showroom, at the time, you know, there was a lot of big bucks, there was, you know, um, Costco and, you know, all of those other stores, they were building rather big stores, and today the model, that isn't the model. So that's, the commercial showroom was for stores that needed high visibility from the freeway, furniture stores, you know, I mean, those sorts of things, and I think those are the uses that are in the commercial showroom.
Isn't, isn't that some of that the fear property, Dan? Doesn't it cross Hornsby?
Yes, the fear property is, like in here someplace as well, part of the fear property, the other part's over here.
Yeah, so, I mean.
I mean, two, two and a half years ago, we had a roundtable discussion with all the local people, and the Combs group, at that time recommended, we have too much commercial showroom, and now, four weeks to six weeks ago, that we had a table, a discussion again, and they still say we got too much commercial showroom, so. The people that put this in place originally are now backing up, say we have too much. So you listened to them then, so now how come it's, it's taken so long to, to get this all rezoned here?
It, it was the commercial retail, we thought we had too much commercial retail. Uh, was the.
Sorry, commercial retail.
And, and the reason it, it takes some time is there's a ten-year cycle on contracted plans, so unless somebody comes in as an applicant owner and says, "I wanna change," which can be processed kinda one-off, then the time to do this is now, when, when we have a ten-year update. So this, this is exactly the time that people who are in that Oxford edition, I think it's called, should come in and, you know, give their input.
I don't know if them people really realize that their current, and again, I'm kinda off words, their current situation is if they, if they go to sell or try to do something different, they really can't, because they're not zoned for that right now, storing all the boats outside and all, in the trailer place, but if it would get rezoned, then they could sell or, or do something different and get some more tax revenue going on for the city.
Is that big square, is that Orman's right there?
No, Orman's, right there.
What's that big square?
Um, actually, that probably would be, cause that's my, that's Paul Parsons, so, yeah, that probably is him right there.
So then what's to the south of him then, Stankies?
Yup, well, Stankies and part of Fears and Notches, I believe, is the other place in there.
Wasn't he at the meeting, too?
Don?
Don?
Yeah.
What's his take? Or didn't he say nothing?
I, I think, I personally didn't get to talk to him about that part of it, but talking to some of the other neighbors, again, nothing is, nothing is moving over here, so we gotta do something different, you know, if something ain't working, you gotta change and do something different. And I'm not saying you, you just throw a bunch of, of five dollar stores up there and call it a day, I'm not saying that, you know? But I think if we can lighten this up, or, or re, redo the zoning to more like light industrial, um, it would open up a lot more opportunities for businesses and sales of property over there.
The only problem is, it's so close that interchange, that's.
Yeah, but if you, if you look at this, I mean, right where this Y is, there's a pond there and all these trees are growing up, you know, so eventually, you're not even gonna see down here because of all that, them trees are growing up in there. And even the trees that are right along, even though they cleared the Hubstock property, there's still a bunch of trees along that property line that kinda hide that, uh, the backside of the trailer place and, uh, the performance shop in there.
So, so you asked about the uses for the commercial showroom district, um, the, you know what I mean, the current uses are there are, um, RV, you know, RV sales and storage, you know, the, your entertainment movies, um, it says indoor recreational vehicle and equipment sales, which is Coats, um, it says car washes, indoor, indoor sales of retail goods, which is what your Gander Mountain is at the current time, indoor automobile service, which at one time we did have the tire place, A1 Tire was there, um, right now you have the doggy daycare. So the uses that are currently on West Freeway Drive are the uses that are allowed in that district.
In, in the commercial showroom.
In the commercial showroom area.
Okay.
And you're, you're pointing to commercial retail.
Right.
Which is.
So.
Generally smaller uses, higher end, more value, closer to the interchange, that's why they're zoned that way. I think, again, it goes to the last comment, which is, this is exactly the type of input that the planning commission needs to look at the comp plan. Now, we're looking at zoning right now, but the comp plan is the first step in zoning, so the comp plan guides the property, and the zoning implements that guiding by laying out specific uses that could be allowed. So I think the, if, if you think folks have input, they should either put it in writing, or come to the hearing, or, you know, otherwise provide that testimony to the planning commission, and then it'll eventually make its way here to the council.
Is there going to be any kind of a notification to all of the landowners over here that we are in the midst, actually probably in like the tenth hour of, of this rezoning here, so they actually know?
It's, it's not a rezoning, it's comp plan.
Well, comp plan?
Yeah.
So there's notific, no notification that gets sent out to the property owners in that whole area that?
We did send them out, had, uh, meetings, group meetings, probably another one, we're talking about having another one before we do the final plan.
Any notice the city sent is, is beyond the requirement under state law, since the comp plan touches the entire city, you would have to notify the entire city if you wanted to do that. The notice is public, posted notice, but because the city had these work sessions.
Right.
Property owners, they got special notice of that. But if you're talking to folks and they're interested in a land use change, now's the time to come in.
Yeah.
So Elizabeth, back to my original question was, if somebody wanted to drop a big warehouse in here, it can't, it doesn't fit right now, I'm not talking about retail, I'm talking about a warehouse.
That would probably be light industrial.
Distribution center.
Yeah, I was just gonna say.
Distribution center, right.
That's the purple. That's your point, right?
Well, I'm, yeah, that's my point. I'm pretty sure this needs to go to industrial, too. Light industrial.
I mean, the, one of the questions that the planning commission can address is, do you want, do you wanna create some sort of hybrid that has, you know, kinda some of the best of both? The question would be, are they compatible? Does one limit the other? Does one encourage the other? You know, what do you, what do you really see as the ultimate land use here?
Isn't it essentially an overlay?
It's, it's definitely.
It's in light industrial, yeah. So the warehouse distribution would be light industrial. An overlay, uh, the only time I believe we've used an overlay, other than, you know, where you have flood zones and other protective features, is, um, in the corners of this freeway district to provide for, an opportunity for residential on land that was guided for commercial. Um, and so there's a suburban residential overlay that give, gives an opportunity to rezon to suburban residential, multifamily, I think that's the case on the Howard Lake project.
Yes.
So that's, uh, that's the only area that we've had kind of a land use overlay, otherwise there's like flood zone and protective overlays.
Okay.
In the comp plan and zoning.
I won't use that term again.
No, that's all right, I mean, it's, it's something that, that we've used, it just isn't used extensively.
Yeah.
So we need some letters, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, if anybody's got concerns or input, uh, letters are good, showing up at the hearing is good, all of that provides, uh, kind of a basis for making a change.
I think we all know land isn't selling, and we'll do what we can to help you guys out, and get these things moving here, so we got land ourselves there, so.
Okay.
Things are changing, we'll change with it.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, 2017 legislative letter for project funding.
Mr. Deputy Mayor and council members, just a point of information, um, this is a letter that was signed by leadership for both the House and Senate, this is to clarify what the funding, uh, can be used for, nine million dollars of bond proceeds from the last legislative session, there was a, let's say, a discussion with Minnesota Management and Budget, uh, they took a more narrow view that the money could not be used for land acquisition and design, um, this now confirms from House and Senate leadership that it can be, um, but MMV would still like to see a clarifying, uh, bill as part of the, the next bonding bill that would make that clear. What this does is, it, it holds up, uh, for at least a couple of weeks or months, the work that's being done on land acquisition and design, but by putting this letter of record, um, it sets the, it sets the agenda for a clarifying bill, um, perhaps as early as, uh, April or May.
Well, hopefully that'll get done.
It's a good thing.
Yup.
And a lot of work, a lot of work was, uh, done by, uh, the county and, uh, the people working for the county, I attended a meeting, I think about a month ago with the, not the commissioner, but, um, yeah, it was the commissioner of MMV. So anyway, a lot of work on, on, you know, making sure the funding is used and is available as intended.
All right, we look forward to getting the, the regular definition in here then.
Perfect.
All right, engineers report, are we gonna go to the resolution here? Probably the same thing.
So I'll, I'll do the engineers report tonight, at our last meeting, Dennis went over an intergovernment agreement, looking at the stormwater, or the regional stormwater plan for the Anoka County ditch fifteen, and he indicated to you that, um, today Rice Creek Watershed District would be signing that intergovernment agreement. They did bring it out, they did bring it over today, and you have it in your additions, and it is ready to be approved.
That's on the east side of the freeway, correct?
This is the stormwater plan for the east side of the freeway, yes, well, actually the east side of the east side of the freeway, cause it's, um, east of Hornsby Street.
Okay.
In that, uh, intergovernment agreement, it says that Rice Creek is committing to, to nineteen thousand dollars, uh, of the overall project.
Overall project is forty, forty-four, forty-five?
Forty-four thousand five, yeah, forty-four thousand five hundred, sweetened the option.
Yes, the overall project is forty-four thousand five hundred dollars.
Dan, you're over there, do you happen to, uh, look at that, do you think that's something you'd use?
I don't know, I don't have enough, uh, knowledge about how it's all gonna work out for people like me, I mean, I have, uh, there's other options to store water on site that, worked on some of that stuff, where you can store underneath your parking lot and stuff like that, so I don't know if that's, would be feasible for something like me, that just speaking for me, so.
Just a point of reference, the council previously discussed this and approved it, so this is really just getting to the documentation of that, that action that was taken.
I believe I voted no on that, and I just kinda, yes, I'm kinda, just seeing if I can clear the air here somehow, but, uh, all right, uh, so let's take a vote on resolution number eighteen dash.
Oh seven.
Oh seven?
We're not there yet. It's the, it's the intergovernmental agreement.
It's not a resolution.
Intergovernmental. All right, so we need a motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement?
So moved.
Second.
All right, call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
The second item on the engineers' report is a resolution, this is in, in follow-up, there was a motion at the last meeting, and the motion was to direct the engineer to do a feasibility study for the extension of utilities to the Vitu Minus roadway, um, parcel, along with the other parcels that will serve that area, and this is the resolution in ordering the preparation of improvement.
All right, uh, make a motion to approve the resolution.
Eighteen oh seven.
Eighteen, eighteen oh seven.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Are you none, motion carries?
The next item on the agenda is, is really for direction, we received a letter from Mendat, and the letter indicates that there's a program called the 2018 Corridors of Commerce Program, and in that program, they have four hundred million dollars, and this four hundred million dollars will be allocated to selected projects across the state, and they, in that letter, they identify different projects, and in the letter it says, "The two highlighted projects are the ones that affect Columbus." And the letter is asking the city council whether or not they wanna support those two projects, and if they wanna support those two projects, are they willing to draft resolutions in support of those projects, and if they do, when scoring those projects for the four hundred million dollars, they'll get an extra forty-five points.
And did you talk to the author of this?
I did not have enough opportunity to talk to the, the drafter of the letter.
But she's concerned about our roads.
Well, who wouldn't, I mean, this, this four lane line into Forest Lake, why would we not support that?
Well, we probably would support it, we're just wondering who wrote it and why, and we don't know where it came from.
It's so backed up every morning and evening, they gotta do something with it. Right. I mean, it's way undersized for the usage, I mean, it can be backed all the way up to almost Highway sixty-one at times.
Then the next.
Almost in the mornings, if you had a busy day.
The next project is a turn lane on the freeway? That's the next one is?
Dedicated.
Dedicated turn lane.
And they did notice, uh, they did note in the third paragraph that this wouldn't replace any municipal consent, so this is at a very high level, if, you know, if they found money and they identified this project as a priority, would you be supportive? So it would still have to be designed, come back from municipal consent, so there's a lot of steps between this, this letter, which is advisory, and an actual project.
You know, it's almost a shame they have this lined up when they started doing a realignment of Hornsby and the bridge, they could incorporate it all into one project. So you wonder how the bridge is gonna line up with this, and how that's gonna be for land acquisition for what we're doing now, um, taking a huge step backwards, I mean, it's, they gotta do it, but just the timing is horrible.
Yeah, I think it'd all be in one project.
Yeah. But I'm in support of it, I, I think it'd be a good idea to do it.
Bill?
Yup, me too.
All right.
So is the direction for us to bring back a resolution at the next meeting?
Sure.
Can it wait till next meeting, when's it due, it's to, uh?
It was to, it's due, um, April sixteenth, so we'll have one more meeting in March.
Just do it now.
Should we do it now, or do you wanna wait?
You don't have a resolution in front of you, we, we wanted to get.
Oh, I see, you gotta draft the resolution.
To draft the resolution, if you said no, thanks, then we wouldn't.
Okay, I got you.
All right.
Yup.
All right. We in agreement on that one?
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
Attorney's report.
Deputy Mayor and council members, uh, A1 of your handouts is a, uh, draft letter to Commissioner Tom Landwehr of the DNR, uh, this is in response to, um, an indication that the staff at the DNR and the Attorney General may be appealing the Sanctuary at Howard Lake variance, and, uh, this provides, um, I guess it's kind of an advocacy letter from the mayor, it would be signed by the deputy mayor, since the mayor's out of town, um, this is essentially advocating for the commissioner to get involved and maybe, uh, ask some questions within the department.
Well, they're still pushing back.
So this can, this can, that's correct, and this contains a lot of, uh, what was on the record and in the staff report prepared by the planner, he did most of the drafting on this letter, we, uh, we did some revisions, um, it would go out, you know, as early as tomorrow, I, I would guess. So hopefully it, you know, basically it's asking kinda for a sit-down with the department rather than getting into a conflict.
Okay, it sounds like it makes sense. So you need just the direction?
No, this we would need approval, because it's authorizing you to execute the letter on behalf of the city.
Okay, so we'll call for a vote on that?
A motion and a vote.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to go ahead and send the letter.
Second.
Okay, we got a first and a second. Call, let's see.
Discussion?
Discussion, thank you. I hear none. Vote.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
I have nothing further.
Okay. Mayor and city council members report. Mark?
Nothing today.
Bill?
I don't know if I got anything. I did read a newspaper article up in Shisago this last week, and they were talking about the new bridge, and they had an open house up there, and they claimed it was in Forest Lake, so apparently that paper person didn't know where they were either. Hopefully, the new bridge with Columbus on will fix that.
Yes.
All right. I had a cable commission meeting today, Midco was there at the meeting. They said we went from 263 the last couple of years to 260, we've got 260 subscribers, we have 433 or so for cable, just cable, so, I mean, internet. They said they need 25 homes per mile before they run line, otherwise it costs $55,000 a mile, they said.
So is that number remaining the same or going down?
It's remaining the same.
Remaining the same.
Yeah, and internet subscribers are going up some, which doesn't make any difference at cable, I mean, they don't get a franchise from that, but, and they got our bid down to 64,000 through Turney Brothers, so they're looking at a couple of things, maybe having us pay for a couple of things, or doing a few more things yet, but we're still looking at updating the city council chambers, so...
Can they do it over two years so that, because I know originally it was 25,000, so is there a way to split the project, doing half this year, half next year?
I think we're up from 25,000, so 64 is, that's what they spent at Forest Lake, 64,000. So we're kind of comped with that, but we're still trying, but they bought some TVs and stuff, Forest Lake did, big screens, 90-inch, I think they were. So I don't know if we need those or not, but, all right, that's all I have. Let's see, Public Works isn't here, Public Information Coordinator? Nothing there. City Administrators report?
I have nothing to report.
Moving right along. Plans...
Is that a first?
Oh.
I just have nothing.
How's the new people working?
Very well. We all three have started, and I think we're going to, we're going to do really well.
Perfect.
Good. Planning Commission meeting for the 21st is canceled?
Yes. However, the, the meetings in April, we have two applications, in the first meeting in April, two applications, and the second meeting in April, Comp Plan hearing in May, so just ramping up now for the spring, so there's applications now in the wings for a fair amount of weeks, including the Running Aces Hotel and New Planet.
Yeah, things are going to start picking up here, it looks like. All right, anything else?
Is, is the building inspector going to be able to handle the Running Aces thing? The hotel, I mean, when do these projects that are being done get too big?
He has already indicated to me that the hotel is a very big project, and he probably will have to get some assistance from specific types of inspectors, because in a hotel, there's a lot of HVAC, and so he would need, he'll have to bring someone with that expertise in order to help him, because he just won't be able to do everything. And so he's preparing for that, knowing that we're going to have a hotel and knowing what their schedule is, because they do want to be open before the race season of next year.
Yeah, I would think the construction of that hotel is different than a house, so...
Oh, yeah. How many rooms is that going to be?
116. Five floors.
Five floors.
So up pretty significantly from the original proposal.
Significantly. The whole first floor originally was, it was going to be 75 rooms, and there wasn't going to be any banquet rooms, and now it's 116 rooms, five floors, and the first floor is all banquet rooms, and, and now, as you heard earlier today, they're proposing a liquor license, so they will have to have a restaurant, because you do have to have a certain percentage of food to alcohol in order to have a liquor license.
So they'll probably pull, they'll probably downsize the restaurant in the existing place and move the restaurant into the hotel maybe, huh?
Well, if they're doing banquet, so maybe it's more set up for a large, large thing, like a Easter thing or big Christmas parties or something like that, so otherwise the kitchen probably won't be used except for the big ones.
I think that'll do good down there.
Yeah, there's five big banquet, from what the floor plans now, there's five big banquet rooms being proposed on the first floor, and the pool is on the first floor.
Oh, pool.
That was, suppose the banquet rooms connect, so you could open doors up between them and petitions and all that?
Yes.
Okay. Does anybody have anything else? All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Nay. Oh, yeah. There we go.